We have a quorum, we do have a quorum. And we like to move into consideration and possible action for approval of minutes. And the first order for approval minutes is the July 1st zoning board of adjustments meeting, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
It's been motioned, is there a second? It's been motioned and second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries for the July 1st zoning board of adjustments approval of minutes. The second approval of minutes will be the July 15th zoning board of adjustments approval. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been motioned, is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned and second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We like to move into our new business. This be, this will be for the ZBA application number VARZ 21-00013, off-site parking for commercial office park development. And this is a request by Cody Muzer, applicant on behalf of Gary K. Ferguson, owner, to allow a special exception as permitted by the Unified Development Code ordinance number 2000-T to allow off-site parking on an adjacent property for a commercial office park development in the general business district section 2.7.3.7. The general location is 2721 Sunrise Meadow Drive, Pearland, Texas. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, members of the board. My name is Florence Buaco. This request is for a special exception to place some of the parking for a commercial office park on a separate adjacent property. And this is a request that is permitted by the Unified Development Code with approval of the zoning board of adjustment. The general location is 2721 Sunrise Meadow Drive and intended use as a commercial office park and it is in the general business zoning district. So staff sent out notification to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property, and we did get one phone call inquiring for more information about the proposed request. So what you have on the screen is the zoning map of the property, the property is on general business, the adjacent property that the parking is proposed on is also zoned general business, and it does permit the parking and the office park use. This is the underlying land use, the underlying land use is retail offices and services. So just to give you a brief history of this property, it was annexed into the city of Pearland in 1996, and then in 2007, there was an agreement drafted between the two adjacent property owners to allow a future parking on the access easement to the adjacent property. The adjacent property is a hotel and the subject property serves as the driveway to the hotel. And here, I just want to make note that there is a second driveway that connects the hotel to Broadway, and so this will not be the only access to the hotel. The property was replatted in 2021. So what you have on your screen is an aerial view of the subject property. The area showed with the, shown with the red border is the subject property, and then the property to the east is the hotel, which is part of the subject property. The proposed office park is to the north of the subject property, and so what they are planning to do is to have some of their parking on the subject property, which is shown with the red rectangle. So these are some views around the subject property. The first one is a view towards the east, which is the hotel, which is part of the subject property. And then our second one shows the, the area to the south of the subject property, and then to the north is a subdivision, which is adjacent to the proposed office park. So this is the site plan that has been presented by the applicant, the area to the north or up on your screen, outside the rectangular border is the proposed office park. And then the area within the rectangular border is the access easement where the additional parking is being proposed. And just to give you some brief statistics, the proposed parking for the whole development is 151 parking spaces. The required parking for office use, the total square footage of the proposed development is 32,100, and the required parking for the office use is one space for every 300 square feet, feet of office space. And so the required parking comes out to be 107 parking spaces. What the applicant is proposing is to put 40 parking spaces off-site, which is to the southernmost part of the subject property. And then the, there's another 33 parking spaces right towards the north of the subject property, which takes its access from the subject property. So just to be clear, aside from the parking that is actually located on the, on the adjacent property, there is onsite parking that takes its access from the subject property as well, which is off-site. Hopefully that is clear to the board. So moving on, so this is a more zoomed in view and a comparative image of the existing conditions versus what is proposed. And so if you look at the two, what is being proposed is to realign the, the current driveway shown by the cursor and put some parking towards the south of that driveway. And then the driveway would also serve as an access drive for additional parking towards the northern portion of the subject property. So staff has reviewed this request based on the criteria in the Unified Development Code for approval of special exceptions and has determined that it meets one of the criteria. And here, I just want to make note that it needs to meet just one of the criteria, and that criteria is to allow off-street parking where all or part of the minimum number of parking spaces required on this, for the proposed development is either locate, is located within 300 feet on an adjacent property. One of the conditions is that the, that adjacent property needs to be owned by the principal use, but that is not the case in this situation. It is owned by the adjacent hotel. But the second condition is that even if it's not owned by the principal use, there can be an agreement between the two for shared parking as long as the adjacent use has adequate parking, and in this case, the hotel has adequate parking. And so it does meet that criteria in the UDC. And so based on it meeting that criteria, staff recommends approval of the special exception for off-site parking on an adjacent property for a proposed commercial office park. Thank you, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Florence. Is there an applicant presentation? If you would, sir, would you come to the podium and state your name, oh, the podium back there and state your name and address for us?
So the name is Gary Ferguson, and I'm just here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other, no, there's no other person wishing to, there's, towards the applicant, okay. Do we have any persons wishing to speak for or against proposed request? Okay, go into staff board and applicant discussion. Any questions? Yes.
This would be a question for staff, I think. Florence, would you be able to pull up the slide three or four, the one right before this one, I think? That one right there, yeah. Just for my clarification, there's a, how many spaces are available without the spaces in the red rectangle?
So there would be 111 spaces on this property, subject property, on the office park itself.
Okay, and that 111 exceeds the minimum of 107, right?
It does, but wanting to take note of is that the, there's parking on the office park property that takes its access from that access drive within the red rectangle. So that would be another 33 parking spaces.
Okay, I, I guess I lost you there. So my thinking was if there is only 107 required and they have 111, I think you said?
Yes.
They've met the minimum already, they don't need an exception, do they, a variance rather?
So another thing that the applicant mentioned is that this property is on general business, and apart from office use, it allows additional uses which require higher parking. So things like a hair salon is, requires a parking space of about 1 to 200, there's retail and other uses that are permitted, and so the applicant is hoping to have that flexibility with the additional parking.
Makes sense, thank you.
Just as an issue of clarification, although this is the site plan provided by the applicant, and this is what staff has based their comments on with the numbers, I, I do think it's important to note that the site plan, that no building permits have been issued yet. The issue in front of the board is, can you park on this property? How many parking spots you get, does this comply with all of the codes? Those are issues to be determined at time of permit and time of construction. So really, the issue is, can you park your cars on this property to serve your business? And staff is saying that they support this, the UDC allows it as long as they meet the criteria, and staff is suggesting that they meet the criteria.
I do, and maybe this was already addressed, but is this portion, will it, will it, is it wide enough to contain all of those parking spaces, or will it have to be repaved or widened to go into the green space at all, and it, and if not, is it still wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles and, and anything like that?
So if you take a look at the comparative image we have, the applicant is proposing to realign that access drive, and so that would take out a lot of the green space that you see adjacent to that driveway.
And one thing to bring up with this, I board, this, as Florence mentioned, this is a realignment of the driveway here. You can see it makes more of a straight, a straight on from this curb and from this parking island, which I believe are, are here. So you're really looking at this coming across and having this angle stop somewhere around here, which then pushes all of this, all of this parking up by about 20 feet. So the proposal for this development meets its open space, so it doesn't, we're not counting on that additional off-site green space to count towards the minimums for this space to be developed. As Lawrence mentioned, this is only about allowing for the parking off-site, which we are recommending approval for.
And that was one of the reasons why I made that comment. I, I wanted to make sure that, you know, there's still a review process that happens. Does this alignment comply with the fire code? Well, the access aisle still gives sufficient width for the fire code, otherwise, we wouldn't have recommended the approval of it. But will there, will they still need to make sure that there's turning widths and radiuses? Absolutely. Is the open space going to be satisfied on it? I don't know, I'm not a reviewer, but, you know, that's, we wouldn't allow them to create a violation of the open space for the hotel by putting pavement here, and we wouldn't allow them to create a violation of the open space on their lot. Again, those are things that are reviewed when they do their permit review and they submit those things. So this site plan, while that's the applicant's presentation, it hasn't gone through all the trappings yet. I, I don't know what the status is of the building permit, I don't pretend to know those types of things. It, it really is, will you allow one person to park on another person's property?
So Lawrence, or maybe not Lawrence, but Florence, then are we reducing the amount of, based on this rectangle, are we thereby somehow reducing the number of parking slots the hospital has?
The hotel.
Or the hotel, excuse me.
This is not affecting the amount of parking spaces that the hotel has, because there, currently, there is no parking within their area. The site plan that's provided meets the minimums for office use, but if we, if this were to be denied and those parking spaces weren't created off-site for allowance for this site to develop, then they would be limited in the number of uses, or they would be limited in the number of buildings that they could develop if they explored uses that were outside of the office use.
Makes sense, thank you.
I would like to adjourn this public hearing and move into consideration and possible action.
There's ZBA application number VARZ 21-00013, make a motion to approve a special exception to allow off-site parking on an adjacent property for commercial office.
It's been motioned, is there a second? It's been motioned and second, do we have any discussion? No discussion, all in, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We'd like to move into ZBA application number VARZ 21-00014, reduction in required landscape buffer between non-residential and single-family residential. This is a request by Lisa, and please excuse me if I mispronounce your last name, Dobrovsky, Windrose Land Services, applicant on behalf of Terry Ward, Mission Park, Pearland LP, owner, or variance as permitted by the Unified Development Code ordinance number 2000-T to allow a reduced landscape buffer between a non-residential development and adjacent property with single-family residential use in the general business district. The general location is 2849 Cullen Parkway, Pearland, Texas. Florence?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a variance where you set back, a reduce, okay, so this is a variance for a reduced landscape buffer, and the request is for a six-foot wood fence with masonry columns and a seven-and-a-half-foot landscape buffer in lieu of the required 25-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot masonry wall. The general location is 2849 Cullen Parkway, and the intended use is a commercial office park, the property is on general business. And so again, staff sent out notification to property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. We got one written comment against the proposed request, one comment for more information, and one phone call asking for more information as well. So what you have is the zoning map for the area, the subject property is highlighted with yellow boundaries, and it is on general business, which allows the proposed office The proposed office park has an underlying land use of retail offices and services that permits office uses. So to give you a brief history of the site, this site was developed with a single-family house in 1970, and then in 1997, it was annexed into the city of Pearland. Then in 2020, it was plotted as a mission park, and after that, in 2021, the applicant submitted an application for the proposed office park, and that's a building permit for the proposed office park. And staff discovered that the property directly south of the subject property was used for commercial purposes, even though it was zoned general business. And so that is what triggered the buffer requirement for the subject property. Oh, sorry, so used for residential purposes, so it is zoned general business but used for single-family residential purposes. And so that is what triggered the buffer requirement, sorry about that. Okay, so this is an aerial view of the subject property shown in the red border. The variance is for the property directly south of this subject property. So the subject property is bordered by two single-family residential uses. One is to the southeast corner, which is a smaller single-family parcel, and then there's a larger parcel directly south, which is also zoned general business by use for single-family residential purposes. And so the variance is for the area highlighted with the yellow oval, which, exactly, okay, yeah, so which is where the 25-foot landscaped buffer with a six-foot masonry wall is required. The distance between the existing house on the property to the south and the border of the subject, southern border of the subject property is approximately 150 feet, and there's also vegetation between the existing house to the south and the border of the subject property. And so our Unified Development Code has buffer requirements essentially to ensure that any nuisance from noise, lights, or any other use of the site is mitigated when there's a single-family residential property adjacent to a commercial property. And in this case, this single-family residential property is far away, that's about 150 feet, and also already has existing vegetation in between that and the commercial property. So these are two important views, one is to the smaller residential property to the south, in the southeast corner of the subject property, where the applicant is already providing a 30-foot landscape buffer. And then the second one is a view towards the south, the, the single-family residential property to the south, showing the, the trees or vegetation along that. showing the, the trees or vegetation along that southern property line. What we have is an, a site plan submitted for building permit by the applicant. What is highlighted in green is the 30-foot landscape buffer that has already been provided by the applicant. And this is to provide a buffer between the smaller single-family home in the southeast corner of the property. And then highlighted in the red rectangle is the southern border of the, the subject property, which borders the single-family home where the 25-foot landscape buffer with the six-foot masonry wall is required. And this is where the applicant is requesting to reduce that landscape buffer to seven-and-a-half feet, and also put in a wooden fence with masonry columns. And this is a closer view of what the applicant is proposing. And here, I just want to, the board to take note of the fact that even though there is no immediate requirement for that landscape buffer as a result of the thick vegetation on the property to the south, staff cannot make assumptions about what that property to the south would become in future, or what would happen to the existing vegetation. And apart from that, the Unified Development Code does not allow the variance process to be used as a way to set aside any requirement of the UDC. And so essentially, the applicant would have to comply in a way to provide that buffer and that required wall. And so staff has reviewed this request based on the criteria for our proven variances established in the Unified Development Code. And as you can see, this request does not meet a lot of the criteria established in the Unified Development Code. First of all, there's no special circumstance on this property. And typically, a special circumstance would be something that is unique to the lot, that makes it different from other properties, and makes it difficult for the property to comply with the requirements of the Unified Development Code. And also because this is vacant land and it's being designed, or an office park is being proposed on this land, we believe that the variance is somewhat caused by the design that was provided by the, by the applicant. I want to make note of the fact that this variance, if it is granted, would not be detrimental to the adjacent property, just because of the distance between that house and the property boundary, and then the existing vegetation. And so staff does not anticipate any negative impact to the property to the south. And we do not believe that granting this variance would lead to a disorderly use of any of the adjacent properties. But at the same time, we do not believe that this variance is the minimum that would be required by the applicant to make this project work. And at the same time, we also believe, in a way, this variance is based on financial gain or a bit reduced on existing financial hardship. And so it does meet three out of the eight criteria for approving variances. And so just to recap, this is a request to approve a variance. And this is for a seven-and-a-half-foot landscape buffer in lieu of the 25-foot landscape buffer required. This is roughly, this request is roughly about a 66% reduction in the required landscape buffer. And then at the same time, there's also a variance for a six-foot opaque wooden fence with masonry columns in lieu of the six-foot masonry wall required by the UDC. And so here, staff is, just wants to say that the, the variance request, even though it does not meet the approval criteria, we do understand why the applicant would, would want this variance, especially looking at the circumstances surrounding the property to the south, the distance from that house to the property line, the existing vegetation, and the fact that the property to the south is zoned general business. And, and so the existing single-family use is a non-conforming use. And if the property owner to the south were to come to either redevelop that property into residential or expand that property, they would need approval of a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment to be able to do so. And so by right, they will not be able to expand that single-family use or redevelop it if anything were to happen and it ceased to exist. And so staff is not making any recommendation in this case. But we are, what we are recommending is that if the variance is to be approved, that certain conditions should be put in place to ensure that no matter what happens to the vegetation to, on the property to the south, or what it becomes in future, whether it's rezone for single-family residential or the existing single-family house stays, that they are buffered from the adjacent, or the adjacent proposed commercial. And so the first condition is that, aside from the fence that the applicant is proposing to put along the property boundary, that they plant ornamental trees with a minimum two-inch caliper, measured at 12 inches above the root ball, along that border, to ensure that sound, there's additional sound buffering from the commercial development. And in addition to that, we are also recommending that they put in shrapes in between the, the ornamental trees to ensure that any light is cut off, any light intrusion into the adjacent property as a result of anything happening to the wooden fence is cut out when that happens. And so that concludes staff report, thank you.
Thank you Florence. Do we have an applicant presentation? Would you please state your name and address for us once you get to the podium, sir?
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Andrew Almond with Winrose Land Services. I'm not Lisa Dobrowski, but I work with her at Winrose. We're the applicant on this case, working with a developer who is also in attendance with the meeting. So I think staff did a pretty good job of outlining the situations affecting the property. I think obviously, one of the big concerns is, are we maintaining the 30-foot landscape buffer against the smaller piece to the southeast? Our original application showed no landscape buffer along the south property line. The biggest reason there is, is just as staff said, there's over 150 feet between the single-family residence and the property line right now. And our site plan also has the vertical structure set back even further. So as we're proposing it, the parking spaces being on the property line, that's over 200 feet of separation between the existing house to the south and then our proposed development. In terms of the intent of the ordinance and what we're trying to accomplish, the buffer and the separation, even without the seven-and-a-half feet, more than meets the intent of the city's code. The developer, after talking with staff, is happy to comply with the seven-and-a-half-foot vegetative buffer. Anything more than that, if you can look at the site plan, it's going to cause him to lose parking. Because at the center of the development is a detention pond, and we're already, we meet the design criteria for the detention pond. We can't lose anything there. And so if you take that parking away along the south edge, you're basically reducing the building, the amount of building that we could put on the site. And of course, this does meet the city's zoning regulation, you know, intent it being general business. And it meets the city's future land use code, or the future land use plan designation as commercial. Of course, this is Broadway, just south of Broadway. And this area is going to be commercial at some point in the near future. This is the first step towards that. We are, we are a single-family development that is going commercial. And I would assume that the other properties in the immediate area would do so as well. So again, we think this meets the intent. We think we're, we're abiding by the strict rule of laws that pertains to the smaller property to the southeast. And we think that we more than meet the intent and the separation vegetative and space-wise for the property to the, to the south. So our unique circumstances are the fact that it is, you know, non-conforming use to the south. This whole area is intended for commercial, and our unique type of development provides a very good separation. Those are the points of our case.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Almond, before you leave, because you are not Lisa, even though you are representing the applicant and you're on, you're with Winrose, would you be sure to fill out one of our yellow cards?
Yes, sir.
Speaker registrations. Thank you, sir, we do appreciate it.
I'd like to move on to any persons wishing to speak for or against proposed requests. Would you please state your name and address, sir? And have you filled out a yellow form?
Dr. Gary Harwell, 2854 Old Chocolate Bayou. We have the little corner there, the southeast corner outlined in green. We've sent in a statement, but I'd like to read it. And then we also have some questions regarding this whole development.
Sir, yeah, go ahead and read your statement. And then, once you finish that, then we, we're not going into questions and answers at that, at this point in time, okay?
All right. I've resided at 2854 Old Chocolate Bayou for the past 42 years, long before the city came that way. While we find the proposed development not to our liking personally, we know we can't stop it. We're asking for reasonable mitigation to the proposed site plan. Various requests that will negatively affect our quality of life and reduce our future property values. Per the city zoning regulations, Pearland Unified Development Code, I want to put it up, 4.2.24 Paragraph J, Subsection 4, adjacent to a single family. When a multiple-family development, manufactured home or non-residential development is established on attractive land, that is adjacent to a single-family development or a property zone for a single family, there should be a 25-foot wide landscape buffer with a six-foot masonry wall or a 30-foot wide landscape buffer along the property line. We request that the planning committee please consider, instead of the 30-foot wide landscape buffer along the north and west sides of our property as proposed, we request the developer be required to apply the 25-foot wide landscape buffer with a six-foot masonry wall. We believe applying this portion of the zoning regulation will provide minimal noise and light issue abatement from the business traffic, and reduction of some of the lighting concerns or other activities associated with the park. We contend that no amount of shrubbery is going to prevent car headlights, office lighting, especially exterior security lighting, from shining into our homes' windows, nor will it adequately reduce noise pollution from such activities. Unless the developer guarantees in writing they plan to plant and maintain shrubbery fencing, it will be at least six feet tall and dense enough to prevent lighting pollution and reduce potential traffic noise from the business. Additionally, per the documentation provided in the applicant packet, the site plan map indicates plan placement of a dumpster pad in the southwest corner of the parking lot. Despite the disposed, proposed 30-foot shrubbery barrier, we already know the sounds of a commercial dumpster being emptied would be very intrusive. We can now hear a commercial dumpster already at the Doggy Daycare Center across the street from us, and also from the Sprout Store up the street about 4:00 a.m. every morning. And they're about 200 yards away. Placing the dumpster there would be, would be essentially right outside our bedroom window. Even with the requested 25-foot barrier and six-foot masonry wall, we know there will be substantial amount of noise. If possible, we're requesting addressing that issue. At the present time, the development at the northwest corner has, light pollutes that entire field, including our back bedroom window, especially during the winter. We have the, our property heavily, heavily landscaped and covered in bamboo and other vegetation when the first development started in Pearland as a mitigation for that. And we still have a tremendous amount of light and noise pollution from both the Doggy Daycare Center and the, the new strip center up on the corner, which is not even finished. They have enough lighting to light that entire field as it is now. My wife has some comments. Any questions for me?
No, sir, thank you. Would you please go to the podium and state your name and address for us? Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Moni Harwell. I reside at 2854 Old Chocolate Bayou Road, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I don't have a whole lot more to add to what my husband has already provided, other than my observations. His hearing necessarily is not as good as mine. And the fact that he can hear the dumpster activity that does occur beyond the reach of where this proposed one is set for is a concern. My concern is, in regard to the 30-foot bump buffer that they're proposing, I know it meets the variance, the zone requirements, but there is parking there, there is going to be people pulling in and out. The lighting from the proposed buildings, which I've, I've seen the proposed plans, and based upon what they've got on their other development that they have available as well, you know, I mean, it's done very well, but I know there's going to be lighting and security lighting that's going to be on throughout the evenings and so forth, that is going to shine directly into that area. Unless, like I said, they plan on putting up some type of form of heavy vegetation in that 30-foot zone. The six-foot wall, whether it was the masonry that's required, or the old ground to put in wood combination masonry, would help cut down a majority part of that, particularly with any other trees that they do put in in that 25-foot buffer. So that is our part of that. For our neighbor, I don't know if they were able to formally submit anything or not. They're dealing with some health issues this week, and so I knew they would not be able to physically come in and appear. There is trees there, but when you go look at that property line, it's not treed up to the edge of the property line. There's like a breakaway there as well. So I just want to make sure that that is noted. That's not obvious from the photos that were provided for the south property. It looks like the tree line comes up to the property line of the, of the commercial park proposal area and the owners', and it doesn't necessarily. There is a break.
Thank you so much.
Fire break at that red line there. No trees along that fence line. It's just a grassy open area. And then there's some trees closer to the house. That does not represent a landscape buffer at present. We'd invite you to look at it. I'd also invite the whole planning board to look at the light pollution of that area, as it stands now before anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to move into staff, board, and applicant discussion. Any questions from the board?
I have two directed at staff, if I could. Lawrence, probably you would handle this first one. I, I'm assuming applicant has not had time to see or be made aware of the problems that we've had somebody testify here to, to a different property than the one applicant is asking there be a variance for. Can we hear that until applicant actually is notified of an issue and has a chance to review it and respond? Or, because there's two properties here we're dealing with tonight.
Yes, sir, and I think that staff will tell you that both property owners have been notified about that. I, I, whether they've had conversations with the applicant or not, I don't know. I, I wouldn't presume that the applicant is unaware of what their concerns are. In fact, I would presume that they probably have heard from them directly, but we're not privy to those conversations. But the, Mr., I'm sorry, the applicant and Mr. Almond may know that they might be better ones to have information. ones to have information that you're looking for. However, I don't know if their version of the information or their understanding of the information is the same as the affected residents.
And one, I, I think he's probably going to end up talking to you about the property to the south. To speak to your point about the fencing.
No, sir. Let's, let's deal with this one question. Gary, have you gotten your question answered?
That was one. Staff and some of the material you provided tonight to us in preparation for this meeting, I suspect, and I'm probably going to apply this to the wrong measurement. Let me read one sentence. It says this, some page two of 27. This has typically been interpreted as an approval threshold of a maximum of a 50% deviation from a required development standard. And I think that speaks to the amount of deviation that we might apply to the southern border down there that the applicant is asking us to reduce to seven and a half feet. Is that, am I correct? With the maximum we can legally authorize would be half of 25 feet? Is that the correct reading of that?
Correct. So normally, we would not recommend approval of a variance that is greater than 50% because it's, it begins to start precedence. Part of the reason why we were not making a full recommendation tonight is that, you know, we, we recognize the development potential of the site to the south. We recognize the existing development that is to the south, but we don't want to begin to set that precedent that this become the normal for properties that are developing adjacent to either residentially zoned or residentially used properties, which is why this is a case-sensitive and a variance-sensitive project.
Last question, and maybe Lawrence, you'll probably have to handle this one, I guess. The way our statute or the UDC is written, does the applicant, or rather, is the applicant able to control which of the choices they would select to put up a barrier? In other words, it's not within our power to say, you must do it this way or you must do it the other way?
That would be correct. It's not, that, that's not the issue that's on the agenda, and that's not something that's within the ZBA's control.
Okay.
So whether it be the 30-foot landscape buffer or a 25-foot landscape buffer with a fence, UDC allows you to comply either way. So for that issue, we're not looking at. However, as Dr. Harwell said, sorry, did I put it next? Harwell. Sorry, Dr. Harwell. There's no T in there. As Dr. Harwell said, there is a, inside that variance in that area where they're seeking, there is a dumpster that's being located. And, you know, their concerns are, are understandable. And this variance, if you were to give it in any way that you give it with a dumpster being located there, I, I don't know how much it affects their property, but I, I think everybody can understand where their concerns are coming from. And I, I don't know how to address that, other than to say that if you grant the variance, you might try to think of, or somebody may have a suggestion is something to, you're going to grant the variance, put a condition on it so that you can reduce the noise pollution, but I don't know how you control noise pollution when something like that happens at 4:00 a.m. by a third party.
I have that on my list of things here to bring up eventually.
Yeah. So, so you can have discussions with that, with the applicant, and you can always take up the questions while, while the, the dialogue really needs between you and anybody else at the podium or on the staff side. You're always welcome to ask questions on their behalf to, to see what their answers are, so you get a true measure of whether or not you want to grant the variance.
Yeah. Yeah. So I have a question to the applicant. So I'm trying to understand, maybe you just mentioned it, but I'm just trying to understand the original proposed buffer, why can it not be done? And would you, since, since you haven't spoken before, would you state your name and address for us? Yes, please.
What is that?
Why can't the original proposed buffer be placed on the property since nothing has been done yet?
So what it does is it makes the entire project shift. And I would, projects would be the opposite. And that has a pretty big impact. And so the other thing is, how can they come out? Then pushes those buildings that are, that the detention line pushes them out into detention line. And there's just not enough room to work with there. We did everything we could to get it out. It's not required. But I want to say, I'm happy to move that dumpster. And I also want to tell you that I have a place to go around there. And I hear you about all this. I, I have, I agree. I'll move that dumpster.
Excuse me, sir. I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I don't, let's try to keep this going here, okay? Because we're in the middle of that. So let's, let's keep that. I understand you want to address that, but I wanted to keep this because we have a lot of questions up here. The next question is the vegetation. Now, being that the vegetation is, if you do the proposed buffer versus the new buffer, will you be tearing down vegetation? Or how would that be, how is that going to be addressed for us dealing with the single-family home behind you?
So on the side of the property I'm on, there really isn't any vegetation currently.
Okay.
There's a fence going down there. So I don't know. I'm trying to state bullet point. I don't know if I answered.
Okay. So you would not be affected in the vegetation on the single, okay? That's why I wanted to ask a question about that. And my last question is directed to staff. The, so this property area, all of it's been zoned to what? Is it now the single-family home's been zoned to commercial as well? Or just that, how, how was that, what's been done to that area?
So what's shown on the screen right now is the zoning map for the city. The general business zoning district was what was applied in 2006 when the Unified Development Code came online. And as mentioned, you know, this property was annexed into the city in 1997. So it may have had zoning prior to, but currently, the zoning is general business for all of the properties within this block formed by Broadway, Cullen, and Old Chocolate Bayou.
Right.
So the two existing homes are existing non-conformities to the general business zoning district. And as staff explained earlier, if those were to be removed or be significantly damaged or need to be replaced, then we would be meeting at a, a similar variance or special exception meeting in front of the board to have those existing or previously existing non-conformities granted a special exception to then have them replaced by new construction.
Thank you. Have we looked at the, if we moved it to half of the 25-foot with the mason rail, have you looked at that ideal?
It just doesn't work.
I mean, it doesn't work, like why it doesn't work?
Because I still don't have enough space for the parking and without having to move the buildings. I'd have to, it, it, I would have to get rid of all the parking. There's just not enough room there. The detention line, that really dictates the management. Because he's, with the new detention requirement, that was one thing that he had to deal with at the beginning, was redesigning the whole entire thing to make it much, much larger. But that really cascaded out. So that, that's really the reason.
Any other, any questions by the board? Yes, Gary?
Dr. Harwell, I have a question. And I, I asked staff a little earlier if we could only compromise, so to speak, by a maximum of 20, or rather, 50% is all we're allowed by law to compromise on, on that southern border. And that's going to be 12 and a half feet. What do we do? I mean, if that's all the law, if statutes allow us to do, we don't have the authority to change that. Any suggestions or?
The only thing I'm thinking of is the houses.
If you would, if you would, sir, I'm going to, I'm sorry. Would you please go back to the podium?
So I, I think there might have been some confusion, and I apologize, Mr. Schrom, if I misunderstood you, but you asked a question of Dr. Harwell, but the question really appeared to be towards the applicant.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
So Dr. Harwell is one of the residents. The applicant is Terry Ward or Andrew Alaman on his behalf.
We apologize. Sorry, Dr.
You can come up here now. They asked for Dr. Harwell, I was like, okay.
Our apologies on that. Well, this, the question was directed to, to the applicant. Yes.
I'm sorry. What was the question again?
Well, if, if the city, Pearland City Unified Development Code only allows this board authority to compromise in the amount of, a maximum amount of 50% of the 25-foot, what do you call that, barrier, not barrier, but landscape edge there, that's 12 and a half feet would be the maximum that we could approve versus the seven and a half feet that you've requested. Suggestions?
Well, what I was hoping was that the house that's, the residential house that's on the now commercial zone property is 150 feet away from the property line. And I, I was hoping that maybe the board would see that some of that could be credited for the buffer. And there's already a lot of foliage and trees there. And again, the house is 150 feet away.
What would be your objection to doing a masonry wall at the 7.5 buffer?
Well, I don't know. That's in addition to the 6-foot.
Not in addition, as the, just the requested variance required except at doing the masonry rail, but at seven and a half. What would be your thoughts on that?
On, so what, what, the whole design is, it's a, it's a wood fence with masonry column. And I don't know if we're talking about the same thing with that.
No, no, we're not. We're talking about a masonry wall, just a wall, brick, so when the cars turn in, the lights will not affect a, a single-family home at all.
Is that just along the smaller portion or along the whole?
According to this, according to the original request, the proposed buffer, according to the original proposed buffer, the actual masonry wall versus having a wood fence with the mason rail inside, separate.
It's an either-or situation, like the, what they're saying is staff can only, or this, this group can only approve a 50% reduction in any of the different conditions. So what, what they can do, what you can do instead of the buffer is a masonry wall. And so they're asking if you're okay with doing the wall instead of the buffer. Yeah, if that's what's required. The, the issue with it is, is just, it's, those walls are, that's probably a hundred and some thousand-dollar wall down there. And, you know, okay.
I understand. Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board?
Well, I'm, I'm going to come back to staff again.
I would say, yeah, I would say a seven and a half foot setback with a masonry wall would not be compromising your 50% because the wall is very expensive, more expensive than the property. If you take it on a monetary basis, you're not compromising your 50% reduction in what the ordinance says, to me.
Are, are we exceeding our authority if we do that, Lawrence? I mean, the UDC is pretty plain.
I, I, I wouldn't calculate it as a cost proposal, as Mr. Garing is suggesting. I would say that, you know, you're looking at what is the standard and what are you being asked to vary? So if I were to say that the standard is the distance, a 25-foot buffer, then anything beyond 12 and a half feet would be more of a waiver or it would be overriding the requirement because, you know, you're, you're exceeding 50%. If you were to do some sort of a, well, I, I don't even know how to approach the wood fence one. I, I mean, to me, a, a variance of a 6-foot masonry wall would be a 5-foot masonry wall. Because again, you're looking at the product. I, I don't know how to say, unless we're using children's fairy tales, you know, if, if brick is the 100%, wood is 50%, and straw is, I, I don't know. I, I couldn't calculate that. I, I, I think that staff has outlined why they're not making a specific recommendation on this one, because of the, the nature of the residential dwelling towards the south and the special exception that would be needed in the distance. But I think staff has also outlined for you the fact that, and the applicant has agreed that, you know, that the distance between them and that home is, is significant, although all of the landscaping is on the property owner's side. And, you know, should they be the one who should have to maintain the landscaping for this business park that, that's looking to come in? I, I guess that's why y'all get to do your civic duty and get the title commissioner or board member. It's not for the big bucks because I know it's a volunteer job. So I, I, I think you're, you, you've got a lot of things to consider, and we can understand your, your predicament.
Thank you. Let's put this in motion and then discussion. Is that okay? Just in motion, I have discussion.
And I think we're okay with postponing. It sounds like there's, there's not enough facts. We weren't aware of the 50% issue. So if you all would like to postpone so we can talk with the neighbors and get a different set of recommendations coming from our side, we're okay to cut it right here and go to the next meeting. If that's preferable for the group.
They have, do they have the right to do that? I mean?
They can request it, and you have the ability to, it, it would take somebody on the dais to make a motion in a second and then a vote to postpone it to the October meeting. But we could do that. There's no difficulty with that.
Did you gentlemen have anything else you wanted to say?
So before we completely leave off and make whatever motion is going to be made by the board, I do just want to stress that part of staff's recommendation or idea concept that we wanted to put out there was that there would be additional ornamentation through landscaping and the hedgerow, which would, even though we are not, a portion of the variance that's requested is to get away from the masonry wall, we were adding these conditions for consideration in, so that way you still maintain additional adequate screening for headlights that are parking against those areas. Either by the column that is proposed for the wall, the tree, or the shrubs, you would have adequate coverage to screen those headlights. So just a, you know, food for thought as y'all are mulling over and making your final considerations for what to do. And this is, of course, available to the applicants, should we table this. Just want to throw that out there before we get done.
All right. Members of the board, I propose that we postpone this hearing to a future date at the ZBA. And may I? date at the ZBA. And may I ask staff if they would include in their analysis some sort of comment about this ornamental shrubbery barrier that would apply to the property on the southeast corner of this landscape that has addressed, been addressed here?
If I can get you to clarify that statement.
Well, the way it's set up now, as my understanding, there's a 30-foot landscape buffer with no wall, no shrubbery, no nothing. And it's unclear to me, reading what staff on the staff recommendation says, if variance is approved, staff recommends the following conditions. If you had a comment in there and say these, these would apply to both properties because we're talking about two houses now, two different property lines, these apply either in combination with some kind of six-foot fence or 25-foot barrier, or how would that work? The staff recommendation.
Okay, cool. I can solve that problem right now. The, or clarify that issue. The proposal and the, the pieces that staff was recommending are only for that most southern property line because the areas that were highlighted in green are meeting the regulations of the Unified Development Code. So there is no variance being requested there. And just one, one more. What Mr. Ward has said about moving the dumpster location, I think will help with the situation that the residents are raising their valid concerns about.
Mr. Ward, because this is being recorded and broadcast, we can only hear your comments through the podium. But we, we appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Schrum. What I would suggest is that while staff can't force anything for an area outside of the variance, Mr. Ward and Mr. Alamon have heard what you have said, they may be coming in recommending or agreeing to certain conditions as part of this issue. We, we don't know. We can't force that on them. But if they understand the concerns and trying to be the good neighbor, they may, they may attach something additional to their future application or come back letting you know that they're agreeing to certain additional conditions that, that don't pertain to this particular issue. But as far as city staff is concerned, we can't force something with what I'm going to call the lighter shade of green area that was not part of the variance application.
I'm going to restate the motion.
Oops. There was a motion to postpone to a future meeting agenda, which would be the first meeting or the only meeting scheduled for October.
Which is October 7th.
October 7th of 2021 at 6:00 PM. The motion was made by Mr. Schrum, Board Member Schrum, and I did not hear a second.
Is there a second? It's been motion and second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm going to vote to approve it, of course. And I do very much appreciate the applicant to be here and take the time to explain all of this and try to work with us to do the best and the benefit of everybody, all the parties involved in this. Thank you very much.
Is there any discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor for, for the approved motion, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. We'd like to move into old business.
Did you vote twice, Mr. Lewis?
Just once.
You're just demonstrating how to raise your hand for the motion to?
I meant as a gesture to raise your hand. I'm sorry. Moving to old business, and this is an extension request of ZBA application number VARZ 21-00008 variance. This is a request by Zapta Patel, Zapata Patel, applicant on behalf of Platte Properties owner for an extension of an already approved variance as permitted by the Unified Development Code ordinance number 2000-T to allow reduced rear and side setbacks and reduce parking to accommodate office use in the general commercial district. And this is to refer to June 3rd, 2021 agenda packet. And this general location is southeast corner of Old Alvin Street and Walnut Street, parallel in Texas. So for us, the board, we've looked at this, and what do we need to just, what, what are we, what are we doing here?
So there's a expiration time for any variances that you grant. It automatically expires. Somebody before it expires can ask for you to extend it. If you need to hear the information as to why they want it extended, you're welcome to do that. We can do the staff report and have the applicant who's here, Ms. Patel, on their behalf. Or if the information in the packet answered all those questions, and you just wanted to have a motion in a second, we can do that, too.
I remember this. I remember. Is there a motion on the floor to give an extension to the ZBA application VARZ 21-0008?
I, I don't see a motion yet, so I'm assuming that you would like to hear some information to base the motion on?
Yes. Yes. If we have Ms. Patel, would you please give us an, an update?
Of course. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This project, we're having to do things in a little bit of a different order. We, this lot was not platted. So what we had to do was get the variance first before we incurred the substantial cost of plating. So we requested the variance. We actually had two variances go through. We are in the process of plating. That plat is actually going to be approved or submitted for approval next week. So the problem is, is because normally you would plat first and then have the variance, then you can go to the building code. We're doing things a little bit reversed, and we're a couple of weeks off, and therefore we need an extension. We're not stopping work. It has been continuing. Unfortunately, plating just takes a while. You have to ask for city letters. You have just so many steps in the middle, and meetings only happen when they happen. So that's why we're in this situation.
Thank you for that clarification.
And if, if I could add to that discussion, part of the rules of procedure for a variance is that we require property to be platted unless we run into an instance like this where the size of the property is, and the development of the property is contingent on the variance being granted. So with this one, the developer could not, or was not feasible to get what they desired unless they got the variances. The variances have been granted, and now they're working through the process to get, as Ms. Patel has said. So this is a very reasonable expectation to see this extension come through.
Thank you. There a motion?
Make a motion to, for the extension request for ZBA application number VARZ 21-00008.
It's in motion. Is there a second? It's been motion and second. Any discussion? No discussion? Then all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
We are ending the ZBA at 7:14 PM 2021.